Okay, let's go ahead and start our meeting today. Thank you all for being here and being all cheerful and everything. It's the forty-sixth meeting of the one hundred and forty-third Council, the Corporation of the City of Saint Thomas. And if I'll ask first, do any of the members have any disclosures of interest? None whatsoever. Great minutes.
May worship have motion that the minutes of the meetings held on December the fourth, twenty twenty-three be confirmed? A move by Counsel Herbert, seconded by Counsel Clark.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Council will now resolve itself into committee the whole to deal with the following business. First order business is strategic direction. And the first item under this committee is a strategic plan presentation to be made by Clime Consulting. I see we have a number of people online. So if we could get Clime Consulting available, thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, certainly can.
Okay, I just, I'm just playing around with the settings a little bit because I guess I was just added as a panelist. So I'm just going to share my screen here and make sure it's all working properly. Can everyone see that?
It's good on my screen.
Okay, awesome. Okay, I'm just gonna get my screen settings up here. Okay, hello, everyone. Nice to see you again. Thank you for inviting us to present and we're happy to be here today and present a draft, high-level draft of the strategic plan for the city of Saint Thomas. We've been doing lots and lots of work and been supported to a great degree by our wonderful steering committee. And we've done a lot of engagement and consultation and environmental scanning. So we're here to present, as I said, a very high-level overview. Please, I know we don't have a lot of time, so please jump in and ask questions or add your comments as we go along. And I'll be happy to provide you with further information if required. Okay, so are we all set to start?
Please do.
Okay. Okay, so we thought we'd just start and give you a sense of who really joined the conversation as we went through the engagement process. And we had a really awesome level of participation from various groups from across Saint Thomas. So we've listed here the audiences along the left in the first column. And in the middle column, we just show you the engagement format and then the number of participants in each, for each group. So we did quite a bit of work with the city residents, some people from across the city. We did three town hall meetings. Two of them were in person and one was virtual. And we had forty-five participants at those three meetings. There was also a public survey done. And that was before we started our work on the project, so that was back a little ways ago. But there were three hundred and thirty-six people that participated in that. And then we also did some pop-up mini-surveys at different events that were being held across the city. Like there was a Knights game and some different festivals and events, and we had seventy-eight individuals participate in those. We were also very fortunate to have a conversation with youth from the city and that was at your library and we had twenty-five participants there. We had focus groups with staff supervisors and senior leaders. And we also did an employee survey and had about two hundred and two people participate in that. We also did a meeting with your senior leaders. And obviously with all of you, we did a great focus group back a few months ago. We did some focus groups with community and social service partners. I had twenty people participate there. Businesses and developers. And then as well, we did one-on-one interviews with city leaders as well. So lots of good participation, about seven hundred and eighty-seven people joined the conversations through these various formats. So really wonderful. What was interesting as we meet with these different groups and we receive information and feedback from them, what we always find is fascinating is how there's significant commonality between what people see as important, what they prioritize, what they see as the most wonderful things about the city and also the things that they're a little bit concerned about. So definitely great commonality across the areas. Any questions on any of that? Okay, I'll just keep going. So the next thing we did was what we call a SWOT, which is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, as well as aspirations. And we develop our SWOT, which is a high-level overview of these areas and we gather this information based on two key, two key inputs. The one is the inputs that come from all of that engagement that we shared with you. So what did we see as the common themes, the common concerns, strengths, opportunities that were emerging from all of that environmental scanning? And I think most of you have probably reviewed the, you know, significant report that we put together based on the community engagement. And there was definitely strong priorities that were emerging from that. So this is, the other piece is we also do an environmental scan and we look across the city and see what's going on in the environment. What's really impacting you currently? What does the future look like? And so from there, we can also combine that data with the engagement data to identify, okay, what are the big areas that we want to focus on in what we call the SWOT? So this is a little bit of a busy slide, so I'll just touch on it. But basically what it shows is your strengths and your weaknesses as a city and the opportunities and threats. And of course, as you know, threats really become opportunities and opportunities become threats if you don't act upon them. And we're always leveraging, you know, our strengths and building upon those and then identifying what weaknesses do we need to overcome? And the last piece is your aspirations. And this is what we heard from people when we asked about the question. Imagine the city five, ten years out. How would you want to describe it? What's important to you from an aspirational standpoint? So just to touch on some of the strengths. Firstly, we certainly heard that people see the city as very accountable, that there's good levels of trust, that it's a very caring and engaged and people are very proud to live in Saint Thomas and to be part of the community and of the growth, the future. People see staff as, you know, highly competent and collaborative and, and very committed to the work that they do. You have great amenities, a very strong economic development, that you're business-friendly. We heard open for business. That you are growing. People see that as very exciting, but there's also caution around that. People, some people are, you know, concerned, we don't want to grow too fast, become too big. Love your healthcare and your hospital, your parks and your green spaces. There's very strong partnerships with your community providers and agencies. People feel very safe and secure in the community. We heard this comment, people have what they need to live, to live well. And people talked about it, you know, the location of Saint Thomas is very strategic, you know, close to other cities, right on the four oh one, close to the US, all of those good things. So those are some of the, the big strengths that emerged, very common ones. Again, we're only pulling things that are seen as quite, we heard a lot. Weaknesses, people, and again, these are limitations, barriers that we can build, you know, to ident, or we can identify solutions to. So communication, again, we could always improve communication, both internal inside the city, but also external with your communities. People are concerned about that we, you know, we really have to have the infrastructure to support the growth that you're going to experience. Lots of comments that the transit system is inadequate to meet needs today, but also into the future. Of course, there's labor force challenges, you're very aware of those. That perhaps, you know, there's a lack of diversity in the city, you know, our staff don't necessarily represent the changing face and diversity of our community or, and certainly in the future. And similarly, services and programs, we have to be very thoughtful about how do we evolve those to be inclusive to different people that are moving into the community. Of course, limited stock of affordable housing, you know, mixed density housing options are inadequate. Process improvement and planning limitations. You know, staff are very tired. They're doing a lot, a lot of hard work. And, you know, that is, it's very demanding. We do have some technology and digital capacity gaps and how do we resource up to meet the needs of the future and, and really today as well? There's so much work to do. So moving to opportunities and threats. Again, I'll highlight a few, you know, opportunity to, to do even more to accelerate public engagement and communication. We heard lots about people wanting that opportunity to really get involved. Obviously, we can advance our housing and homelessness plans. Advocate for more schools and childcare is very, very important. We need more placements for children and especially as we grow. And long-term care, you know, again, aging community, we're gonna have more and more need for that. Expanding funding is an opportunity. Increasing safe and accessible transit and mobility. Some people spoke about rebranding the city of Saint Thomas for the future. Build on our history, but think also about what do we look like for the future. Downtown revitalization is seen as important. Again, we can always strengthen community partnerships, protect our environment. So those are just some of the opportunities. And then lastly, what do people see as the threats? And so for, one is the access to affordable housing is declining, even youth talked about this, that they see this affordability and I guess because they're older, they're getting closer to perhaps being on their own eventually and wondering where am I gonna live? And affordability is very, very important. The lack of childcare and, and long-term care and even primary healthcare resources. The animal shelter being at capacity, although that is going to be addressed. That we're somewhat behind in equity, diversity, inclusion. That we don't currently have a clear vision for the future, which of course is very much about what this process is about. People are concerned that crime is increasing. They feel very safe, but there seems to be a lower sense of safety in some areas. Very concerned about homelessness in a very empathetic way, but people are certainly concerned that there's growing and complex social issues. Insufficient public school capacity to meet demand. And this whole thing about growth and are we ready for the growth? Do we have the infrastructure that we need to move forward? So, and, and some, not all, talked about how do we become even more fully engaged or empowered in the decision-making process? And lastly, transit and mobility. So there's wonderful strengths, wonderful opportunities, but we also have to obviously overcome limitations and really take action on the threats. And then in terms of aspirations, what do people hope for, for the future of the city? These were key terms that came up over and over again. Safe, vibrant, beautiful, diversified housing for all. We want to continue to be a very compassionate city, a destination. Small town still, but with big city amenities. Very important was this well-planned, thoughtful plan, thoughtfully planned city. That we really need to think about integrating green space and being environmentally conscious and really thinking about how do neighborhoods and communities build, build up in these areas? Where everyone belongs, that was super important. All ages can thrive, that, you know, our economy is strong. But, and ultimately that residents' needs are at the heart of all decisions. So that's a high-level SWOT for you and it really informed very much our way forward in terms of starting to build the plan. Any questions on any of that? Comments?
Counsel Clark?
Thanks. Under weaknesses and threats, there's comments made about insufficient infrastructure for growth. I'm just wondering if they drill, if people drill down and gave any examples of what's on their mind in that area?
Um, people talked, well, they talked about transportation, roads, schools, childcare, just the overall infrastructure of the city. Some of it needs renewal and it's older. There's gonna be expansion. All of those kind of things. And how do we support this growth in a really thoughtful, cost-effective way that, you know, will take us to that next level? Does that answer your question?
Okay.
Okay, so I'll keep going. Okay. Um, so I just wanted to remind you just quickly of our methodology. You know, when we build the plan, it's based on all the data that we've collected and, and that's what really guides us in our processes as we move forward. And so with the steering committee, we've worked very hard and we, we started with developing a, a vision, which is your why, your impact for the communities you serve and what's the the mission for the city going to be? You know, in terms of being stated, and that's your reasons for being as a city, obviously. And then we looked very much at, at, part of this will be determining, okay, in order to achieve the vision, what are the outcomes that we want to deliver for the people we serve, for, you know, the residents, for families, for businesses, for, for all of the people that are the heart of, of the city. And then based on that, we're, we're identifying what are the strategic priorities that we need to focus on in the strategic plan? And those are the things that we really have to do, we have to excel at in order to create value for the communities. What strategies do we prioritize? So that was kind of the next area that we, we really dug into. And also looked at within each pillar, what are the key goals that we should focus on? The next area that you really have to think about are these last two pieces, and that's the, the capacity that you need in order to enable these strategic priorities to take place. So this really speaks to your, your governance, your people or your human resources that do, you know, the work to get this done, what kind of technology we need and the, and the infrastructure of the city. So that's how we develop the plan. And then at the core of everything or the foundation, I guess I would say, is your guiding values, which are very much how do we make decisions, what guides us in terms of how we allocate resources? How do we treat one another? How do we treat our residents and our partners? All of those types of things that really, you know, define who you are as a city. So I'm gonna share some of this with you. We have gone much deeper than what we're sharing today because we're, we have a short period of time, but I'm gonna walk you through kind of a proposed vision, mission, values and the strategic priorities. So that's where we're gonna head now. And again, this is very much based on what we have heard throughout our consultations and our scanning. So the draft vision that we have landed on at this point, and I, and I want to say that we, the steering committee, based on all of the information that we had, developed a first draft of a vision statement. And then we actually did a mini-survey with all staff. And base, and there was most, the majority of people liked or loved the draft vision. Some didn't like it at all and, and that's fine too. That's why you do a survey. But many people also provided comments and suggestions. So based on that, the steering committee then revised the vision statement. So this is the one that we are proposing at this point. And I'll share it with you now. So the draft vision is building a brighter future for our city where everyone belongs and has opportunities to thrive. So the building of brighter future very much builds on what we heard from the various people we engaged about. We're building for tomorrow. We're growing as a city that we're gonna be, you know, it's gonna be a great future. So that really builds on that. We heard a lot about the importance where we want everyone to feel that they have what they need, that they belong in Saint Thomas, that they're cared for, that it's a friendly city, that it, you know, it's a place that anyone can come to and feel like part of this great city. And the last one was, it was very important that people feel they can thrive and have what they need to, you know, be happy in Saint Thomas. And, and recognizing thriving means something different for everyone. So that's important. And we talked about opportunities, they have access to opportunities to thrive, create a better life for themselves, all of those good things. So that is the draft at this point. Any comments or thoughts on that? Do people like it? No feedback? Okay, should I keep going?
Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, the draft mission is, again, this is, you know, much more about what you do. So we are, the city of Saint Thomas provides high-quality, value-added public services. We stimulate sustainable development and economic growth and cultivate a safe, accessible and inclusive city for all. Okay, I'll keep going. The next one is our values. And we just want to mention, we're just showing you the core values. We do actually have definitions for these values, but we're consulting at this point with senior leaders on those and getting feedback from them. So we'll just share the core values at this point. But keep in mind that we don't want them just to be words on a page. That each of them will have a definition around what, what is encompassed within the value. And then ideally you can define behaviors associated with your values so that they truly aren't just words on a wall. There are things that we're actually implementing and living and breathing. So the, the core values that have emerged, and many of these started with the employee survey where we asked them to rank a lot of the values, are trust and accountability, inclusivity, collaboration and teamwork, learning and innovation, and safety and well-being. So you can imagine when you have these core values as a foundational piece of your culture or how your employees and obviously members of council act, that these really inform how decisions are made, how problems are solved, how we conduct ourselves, how we engage with one another and with our communities, and how we approach the work that we do. And we heard a lot about even from staff that we want to be more innovative in how we approach some of the challenges and opportunities before you, that we have to be more nimble and agile. And so that really, you know, is captured here. That collaboration is more critical than ever. And that happens within the city, but also very much with your, your residents, your businesses, your community partners that, that we're better together. And so that was very important. Inclusivity really talks about, you know, that we value the different backgrounds, the perspectives, the strengths, the ideas that people bring to the table and to bring, and bring to the fabric of, of the city. Trust obviously is very much about how do we build, earn the trust? How do we demonstrate accountability? How do we communicate with our, with our various communities? And of course, lastly, safety and well-being. Really, you can look at this in two different ways. Obviously, if we look externally to our community members, our residents, families, children, you know, seniors, you know, businesses, obviously we want, we want to make decisions through a lens of optimizing, maximizing safety at all times for the people we serve. And we want to ensure our communities are well and that they have wellness. And wellness is very much, you know, mental, emotional, physical health. So that's very important. But if we look internally, equally important that our staff have strong well-being, that they feel safe in their jobs and in the culture. And that they feel too that they can thrive as well. So most of these you can look internally, but you can also look at the broader city and externally. So those are the five values that we've identified. Okay. So the next section is the strategic priorities. And we have two pillars within the strategic priorities. And I'm gonna ta, start with the first strategic priority is very much focused on the work that you do and on those key strategic areas that you must excel in in order to achieve the vision, in order to achieve the goals that are various groups that we engaged in are expecting from the city. So we call this pillar excellence in all we do. And there are, there's, I think, five, I'm trying to remember, five key priorities. So the first one is thoughtful, equitable and sustainable growth. Number two is thriving economic development. The third one is equitable, diverse and inclusive communities. The fourth one is housing for everyone. And the last one is public safety and community well-being. And so within each one of these, sorry, within each one of these, we would have a number of, we would have outcomes associated with them and a number of goals that help us understand how do we get to these? So how do we get to housing for everyone? We've identified several goals beneath that priority as well as several outcomes that we want to be able to demonstrate achievement on. So they become almost like performance indicators. So the second pillar is about the capacity we need in order to achieve these priorities. So it's like cause and effect. And we call this one prepared and resilient. And it really drives success on this pillar. So again, it's like, what do we need in order to do these things as a city? And so we again have several key priorities here. Obviously, one of the key ones is good governance. That's critical in order to do any of these. The second one is that we need a passionate and empowered team of employees. Without that, we're gonna nowhere over here, right? We really need a strong and capable team to achieve these priorities. The third one is we need to demonstrate fiscal accountability at all times, using our resources wisely and prudently, making the right investments. And we also need to really continuously improve. You can't rest on your laurels. We need value-added technology and data. We know more than ever, you need great data in order to make great decisions that will help us on this side of the house. We also need to invest in technology because that can make us more efficient, that can streamline things, it can improve efficient effectiveness and impact. It can improve safety. There's so many ways we can use technology. And with the onset of things like artificial intelligence, we have to be looking at that as a city in order to advance these areas. And then the last one And then the last one is, again, we likely won't get the traction we would without reciprocal partnerships. We can't do this work alone. We know that in some areas you will lead, in some areas you will collaborate, in some areas you will support. But we always need really, really strong partnerships to get us there. So these are the enablers and these are the ultimate things that we're really going to make impact. But all of them have outcomes that we want to achieve and all of them have associated goals. And we want, and then at the foundation of all of this, and this is similar to your current strategic plan, is that we identified environmental stewardship and sustainability is woven through both the pillars and the associated goals. So you will see different goals in each, not in each of these priorities, but they are woven throughout all of these as we went through. That's what we decided to do. That still could change, but at this point, that's where we landed. So just to show you an example, this is very, just one simple example. So here's a strategic priority, thoughtful, equitable and sustainable community growth. As you saw, that was the first priority that we talked about. An example of an outcome, how will we measure that? Is that we would want to see that City of St. Thomas is a safe, secure and welcoming city for all. And one of the strategic goals that is nested under this priority is that we will ensure city policies enable thoughtful, age-friendly and well-designed, sustainable and environmentally responsible growth and development. So that's just one example of a priority outcome goal. Any questions on any of those before I just touch on next steps? Okay, so, oh, sorry.
And I was just going to say that I think the next steps are going to tell us how well all the rest of that was, so.
Yeah, so the next steps, what we're doing right now is we have the document, we call the, I think it's draft number nine of the actual strategic plan document that is detailing all of the priorities and then the goals and outcomes within each. We have sent that out to all senior leaders in the City of St. Thomas, asking them for feedback. This is the second feedback process they've been involved with. We already got feedback on the first set of priorities. We made that. We made the tweaks or the edits based on their feedback. We updated. We now have the second set of priorities, the second pillar out for review by the senior leaders. And then we will again edit and then we will obviously go back to staff. We hope to do some public consultation and community partner consultation and of course with council members. So through that consultation process, you can identify opportunities to improve or enhance the various goals and priorities. And then ideally, we will be ready to present a final draft in January. And I think that's it. I think I, I'm a little over, I'm sorry if I am, but that, any questions, concerns? Thoughts? Feedback?
Counselor Clark?
Thanks. Can you just go back to the previous slide?
Yes. Just let me. This one or this one?
No, the first one.
This one?
Yes, thanks. So under strategic goals, will we see, like the first one that's ensuring city policies enable thoughtful age? Are we going to see some, I would just say like more meat and potatoes kind of language there in terms of direct goals? So that seems a little flowery, a little general. And I'm just wondering if, if the, is there another, is there something after strategic goals? Another column or will we get to more specific items?
So strategic goals are generally fairly high level. And in fact, some of these are actually quite like detailed and maybe a little too much. So it's interesting that you see that one as more like flowery or whatever. But they tend to be actually a little bit more high level because we want to give latitude for establishing annual objectives and actions. So in the strategic plan per se, there would be these types of goals that, you know, stay fairly high level. But there's, I think in this first priority as an example, I think there's about six or seven goals. And some are a little bit more, as you would say, at a little lower level. But we don't want to get down to because we want to give enough latitude because it's a, you know, it's a longer term plan. You don't want to get too into the details. But that would be then, you know, the administration would take these goals and then they, what I would call cascade them down into annual objectives and actions. So that moves into the implementation phase, which is the most critical phase of this entire process. Does that, does that help?
Yeah, that, that was what I was wondering whether, what the next step along the line was. So that answers the question. Yes, thank you.
Yes. No, such an excellent question because that is the most important is like, how do you move from this high level document into identifying those objectives for year one and the actions for year one? And it's like that becomes again a prioritization exercise. What ones are we going to focus on? Because as you know, we wish we could focus on everything, but we can't because you have limited resources. So it allows that latitude to do that. But that was such a great question.
And if I can just ask one further than that then to what, to what Counselor Clark just said, would it be this council and the management job each year for us? Because this is more than a one-year outlook at strategic planning. So then each year, you know, we certainly have set some goals, some, Counselor Clark just said, some meat and potatoes we're going to accomplish that year. And we would be checking that throughout the year. Are we, are we on our way? Are we, are we mostly there? And then at some point each year, then we would set the next year's well-defined goals that still meet those strategic goals and back to the strategic plans?
Exactly. Yeah, that's, yeah, well said. So it is an, it's actually, it's a living, the goal will be to have this as a very much a living, breathing document. It becomes very embedded in your culture and how particularly staff work. They work with this document all the time. But as you said, annually, the goal is to set your, you know, what are the, what are the key goals that we're going to work on this year that are on that big, you know, the big plan? And then what are the objectives that we want to accomplish? And then how are we going to do that in terms of action planning? And some I call like low hanging fruit. When you get into that objective level, there might be things you can do and tick off relatively quickly. And then others, there may be things that you need to put together a project team, you know, a cross-functional project team that's going to drive it because it's a bigger initiative. So there'll be, and again, it's like balancing the resources between what I would call, you know, short-term, medium-term and longer-term objectives that you want to accomplish. But again, back to your point, it's a, it's not a one-year plan. It's a longer-term plan. And that's really important to keep in mind. The other piece that will come hand in hand with this, and this is why the outcomes are so important as well, is that as you said, you'll have kind of, you know, a balanced scorecard, what we call balanced scorecard, of performance indicators that you can then identify, oh, you know, are we doing better in this area? Or are we falling behind and why are we falling behind? So, or celebrate the ones that you're really getting great traction on. So that's also a great tool for, you know, obviously council as well as for certainly the senior leadership team.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Peters?
Thanks very much, worship. I raised this when we did our one-on-one and and I still think it's important and it is, have you had the opportunity to look at other strategic plans? Central Algon is going through a strategic planning process right now. South Pole is going through a strategic planning process right now. Thames Valley School Board is doing a strategic planning process right now. The London District Catholic School Board probably is going to be in. Because one of the thing, and I didn't even get to hospital or health unit. But one of the things that struck me throughout the presentation is that a lot of the areas that have been identified by the public and others are beyond the scope of our mandate as a municipality. If someone says we need improved educational facilities, well, yeah, we can do our part. But that needs to be part of somebody else's strategic plan too. Or I didn't, another one I didn't look at was Mental Health Association. And so a lot of these, a lot of these points that were identified are outside of the scope of what our mandate historically is, even though we've crossed back into some of these things. And I'm just curious whether you've done any sort of scan of what others are up to as well.
Yes, yes, we have absolutely done that. We pretty much read every strategic plan in the area. So we're very familiar what's going on across your area and in all these sectors. And we work in many of those sectors as well. So very cognizant of that. We also recognize and agree with you 100% that you are not responsible or accountable for all of these things. There's different tiers of government, different community partners. But you influence one another and you share information and you collaborate. And that's why going back to that one enabler of, you know, reciprocal partnerships, that none of you can do it without the other. I know when we met with the hospital CEO and the board chair, you know, there was a big conversation about how can we work together? How can the city support things that they need and, you know, and on and on. So we would come back to that point that in some of these cases, you are absolutely accountable and you drive it and you're responsible, but you still need support from others. And then there's other parts where you will collaborate and maybe co-create or co-advocate for change or for other, you know, levels of government to get involved. And there's other areas that you may be just influencing partners or advocating for something. And so you'll see that when we get into the goals, we'll say advocate for or we'll say work in collaboration with because we recognize that there is huge distinct differences between those areas. The general public doesn't really know that or may not even always care about that. They just were talking generally. So we would often say, you know, the city is not responsible for, you know, when schools get built or whatever. But you provide them information and you give, tell them, you know, what's important. And so you have, you have influence, but as you said, you're not responsible for. So yes, very much have taken that into consideration.
Thank you. Further questions? Thank you for your presentation. Can you remind us some of the, some of our dates moving forward?
And I'm, we're, we have a date, I believe, in January to present to you. Taylor may have it on the tip of her tongue. I don't have it. Do you have it, Taylor, for when we're hoping to meet with council?
Yes, that's scheduled for, I believe it's a Wednesday, January 17th.
Right.
Great.
Great.
Well, thank you for your, thank you for your help tonight. Thank you for getting us this far. We recognize this process can be very processed. But the action piece following it isn't, doesn't have the same value if we don't have a process to get us to this, to the actual goals that are there. As Counselor Wookiee once wisely said, I don't want to be the part of something else that sits on the wall. And, and we've done a pretty good job with our last strategic plan of pulling it down once in a while and not completing 100%, but feeling pretty good about where we were. We want to make sure this one reads exactly the same way and that this council keeps the dust off it on the shelf and brings it out every quarter or every couple of months you're at council and says, are we doing what we said we were going to do? Are we using the strategies we said we would? So let's work together to get there. We're, we're a good chunk of the way through the process and we thank you for your help.
Thank you very much. I'm excited to hear that, those closing remarks. That's very positive. So that's good. Okay, thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
Your worship, the next item on the agenda relates to an application for proposed official plan and zoning bylaw amendment for the property at 50 Silver Street. I have a motion that report PD 51 2023 relating to the proposed official plan and zoning bylaw amendments for 50 Silver Street be received for information. And further, the council authorized staff to prepare site-specific draft amendments to the St. Thomas's official plan and zoning bylaw 50-88 to permit a business industrial use on lands described as part of lots seven and eight, range one, south of Edgeware Road in the geographic township of Yarmouth, now in the city. And further, that a public meeting be scheduled for January the 8th, 2024 at 6:00 PM in accordance with Ontario Regulations 543/06 and 545/06 as amended. Moved by Counselor McCauley, second by Counselor Gibson.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor. Any opposed? Carrie?
Next item relates to Community Improvement Plan Project for the property at 90 Hinks. I have a motion that report PD 53 2023 relating to a community improvement project by Alexander Kirschner for 90 Hinks Street be received for information. And further, the council approve on loan and grant under the residential program and planning and building fees grant for application 2023-131 as submitted by Alexander Kirschner for 90 Hinks Street. And further, the council direct that a bylaw be prepared to enter into a residential loan agreement with Alexander Kirschner relating to a CIP project at 90 Hinks Street. Moved by Counselor Herbert, second by Counselor Gibson.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor. Any opposed? Carrie?
Next item relates to Community Improvement Plan Environmental Site Assessment Grant for the property at 118 Center. I have motion that report PD 54 2023 relating to a Community Improvement Program Environmental Site Assessment Grant for 118 Center Street be received for information. And further, council direct that a bylaw be prepared to enter into a Community Improvement Program Grant Acknowledgement Agreement with Fresh Start Support Services relating to CIP application 2023-127. Moved by Counselor Baldwin Sands, second by Counselor Clark.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor. Any opposed? Carrie?
Next item relates to revised building bylaw. I have motion that report PD 55 2023 respecting updates and fee changes to the building bylaw. Be received for information. Moved by Counselor Wookiee, second by Counselor McCauley.
Questions or comments? Counselor Peters?
Thanks very much, worship and thanks for bringing this forward to the staff. I'm curious to know what sort of consultations you're going to have with, say, home builders or contractors. And, you know, I just, as we develop this, how do we do a better job of spreading the word of the importance of permits and a permitting process? I think some people want to avoid them if they can, but they're probably doing themselves a disservice. Not probably, they are doing themselves a real disservice. And how do we educate the public and educate the contractors? So it's sort of two parts of, A, what sort of consultation as these are developed? And B, how do we get the word out there?
Mr. Pompilly, welcome.
Thank you, your worship, and through you to, to the counselor on that question, good question. Angelo DeSico is here with me too. So if I don't hit all the points, I'm sure he can come up and provide some relief for me. But I, we do plan to consult with the home builders and we will, they, they meet monthly and we'll make it a point to get this on their agenda and attend one of their meetings. And then from there, I'm sure that Get this on their agenda and attend one of their meetings. And then from there, I'm sure that that would be assigned to a group of them to, uh, to consult with on a regular basis, provide input and updates. On, so we'll have direct uh communication and consultation with local home builders through. Through that body. Uh, as far as better uh use of uh educating the public, our website is the best, best tool that we have. Uh, we are throughout twenty-two-four going to be undertaking many updates to our. Uh, website, but that's, that's one of the tools that, that, that we have at our disposal in terms of. Helping to educate homeowners on our permit process, the importance and value of obtaining permits. Um, and any other sort of means that we can do to do that, we'll exercise all means available to us.
Mister Pompilly, before, before you leave, I. I, 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 I love the idea that we're entering into this process. This is very forward-thinking as to what we want to do as a community. As the mayor of this community, I hear from so many residents of other communities. How this process is a painful one and how in Saint Thomas, we've made it a less painful. Process and maybe even speedier and, and, and easier to work with. Can we, can you ensure me that any process we go into will not turn us into? The other side, but make the side we're already well-known for better.
Yep, through you, your worship, to you, to yourself, to your question and to, and to other counselors. Yes, absolutely. I think. Through this, uh, the main objective is to ensure that our fees are um, are competitive with other area municipalities. Um, so I think this process will be a benefit in, in, in that way. And we'll all, we're always striving to. Ensure that we're probably one of the more competitive municipalities in terms of um. Our, our process and our fees. So there's nothing that we're going to do through this process that I, I, I see where we'll bog things down. If anything, it'll, it'll, it'll. Look for ways that we could make even further um. Improvements and we've got a great team in our building services area that, that will implement that, I'm sure.
Thank you. I, I, I rest assured. Thank you. Further questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Carrie.
Last item under uh this committee on the agenda is notice of a public meeting to take place by Zoom. On December the fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three at ten A M, and that's from the Committee of Adjustment regarding an application for a minor variance by Dustin Litchi. To permit an exterior staircase six point nine five meters from the rear lot line. Whereas the minimum required setback is seven point five meters, and that's for the property at three ninety-three Chestnut Street. Your worship, unless there are any items from the members.
Counselor Wookiee.
Thanks, your worship. Uh, for my colleagues and the, and the folks at home, I, I have several questions regarding the use of shipping containers as structures in backyards. And I have uh talked to Mister Pompilly, Mister De Seco about these, and I want to make sure that we are transparent. About making sure that I ask those publicly, so I, because I think a lot of my colleagues and a lot of people in the public would want to know what's going on with these. So Mr. Seco, if, if um. Or Mister Pompilly, whoever wants to come up, I've got several questions uh for you regarding this, but the first one goes like this. I understand that there's a change in the Ontario Building Code that increased the size of a, a, a structure that does not require a permit. And uh, in that sense, I understand now that people are putting containers in their backyards as sheds. Um. What do we have in our bylaws that say something about this? And as I understand it, the Ontario Building Code overrides our bylaws. And then what can we do, if anything? To change our situation such that? We can make bylaw, we can make. Rules which are applicable for our situation. So that's my, like, first thing. So if I can get. One of the two of you to talk about that one a little bit, that'd be great.
Mister De Seco, great to have you here today.
Thank you very much. Uh, the, like, uh, joy being here as well today for, for this. Uh, so yes, sir, uh. Your worship for the counselor. So, yeah, the building code did change about a year and a half, actually, two and a half years ago now. So the minimum building size used to be one hundred and eight square feet. Uh, has now changed to a hundred and sixty-five for garden sheds. Uh, the building code doesn't actually define, well, what is a garden shed? Um, so there, there could be some interpretation there. Our interpretation is that. It's an accessory structure used to store lawn mowers, uh, yard materials, patio furniture, et cetera, in the, in the rear yard typically. So with that change, they no longer require a building permit if there's no plumbing going to that building. So that was the change there. Um, the, the use of the shipping container as a building goes back a few years to a couple of municipalities. Who wanted individuals to obtain building permits when they install these. We started seeing these more in commercial uses. Uh, you see them a lot actually at Canadian Tire for uh storage of winter goods uh for the Christmas season. They just want to store excess materials in there. Uh, the Building Code Commission, which is a body uh underneath the Ontario Building Code, that basically results disputes between builders and municipal officials. They determine that because these are no longer in the, used in the nature of trade. Uh, for shipping, they are to be considered as buildings. Therefore, you need to apply for and obtain a building permit. To install these as a permanent fixture on a site. Um, and that's where kind of right now our bylaw, the property standards bylaw speaks to the temporary use of shipping containers. Um, you've probably heard them advertised. That's where if you're doing some renovations to your house or you're moving, you can put these shipping containers on. Typically, the bylaw states thirty days. Generally speaking, if somebody's doing a major renovation. Will allow three to four months for, for that project to finish before the shipping container moves. Uh, the particular issue that we're having more recently, and I had this exact same issue uh in my time in London. Uh, was the, the use of these in the rear yard because some of them are unsightly, they're rusty, they don't look very nice compared to a, a garden shed that somebody might put into their rear yard. So. Um. So, uh, so hope that's the first part anyways.
Okay, then follow up, and I got a few of them. Um, is there a pathway forward to us? Like, and we talked a little bit about this, about removing this. And I want to say, first of all, I appreciate that people want your shipping containers as a, a low-cost shed, like, kudos to you for doing that. There are some concerns, though, with neighbors and how they look and. And some other things I want to bring up about lead paint and fumigants, all of those kind of things. But I just want to get a handle on this. Is there a way that we can remove this from bylaw and put it in something else? I believe we can, is, is there something we can do with zoning? And if there is, can you kind of just give us a brief description of that? Thanks.
Yes, so under the building code, the building code essentially supersedes any municipal bylaw. So if we, as an example, in the property standards bylaw arts, there's a prohibition. Um, if, uh, once it's considered a building under the building code, the building code governs. Um. Now, the exception to that, also within the building code, I don't want to get too technical, so if I have to clarify, please let me know. Um, before I am permitted as the chief building official to issue a building permit, the building permit has to satisfy all the requirements of the building code. One of those sections is called applicable law, and there's an entire list of different types of applicable law. That have to be met before I'm permitted to issue a building permit. Some examples are the Childcare Act, so when we had the daycare center that we built across the street. Uh, goes as far as the Milk Act. Um, uh, but the zoning bylaw, the city zoning bylaw is one of those. Bylaws that must be uh satisfied before I can issue a building permit. So if, if the prohibition resides within our zoning bylaw, at that point, we have the ability to restrict. That type of a development, as we do now with the different zone types, the different types of buildings that can go within certain zones. So it would basically be an extension of that.
Thank you. So what is our part as a council in this? Is this something that, uh, a change to in the O P? Is this? Like, what has to happen from both your end and our end for this change to happen?
Um, the prohibition would have to be embedded within the zoning bylaw. Uh, probably, uh, could be perhaps in the general provisions, but as long as it's within the zoning bylaw. Um, basically stating that these are not permitted. In these particular locations. Um, and, and again, I'll. Use the, the London example because I'm familiar with it. That's exactly what they did there. They basically put in a prohibition after a couple went into some residential areas. They didn't really like them. So basically, they said, uh, shipping containers may not be used as a accessory structure in residential zones. And that basically prohibited it completely within the residential zones, still permitted in commercial and industrial, and we see them quite a bit. Car dealerships use them quite often as uh, be, uh, tire storage. Um, but again, they come in, they get building permits. Um, and they are permitted in those zones.
Thank you. I mean, that, I think that's going to be, that will be a very fruitful discussion for us to have as a council in terms of what we think that we would like to do. I've still got a few more. Um.
I, I expected it, Counselor Wookiee, please.
But I'm, but I'm, but I'm getting there.
Before, before you start, sorry, I didn't want, I don't mean to interrupt. I just want to follow up with, with Angelo, so he might not know this information, but. Ne- next, at next week's uh council agenda, I'm hoping to bring forward a report. Um, that is, it's just an information report to advise council that we're looking at. Um, our zoning bylaw in terms of fees, like inspection fees and things like that, that we hope to introduce, but also some minor technical amendments. Uh, relating to recreational vehicles, and we can, we can certainly tag this on. At ti- at, at, at the same time. So the timing is actually quite good. So I just kind of wanted to raise that. That is something that we can address going forward.
Okay, thanks. That, that helps. And I just got a few more. Uh, again, I was responding to a, a constituent's concerns. And the more questions we asked and the more work she did. The more interesting this got as a bigger issue, and that tends to happen to us. Um, one of the concerns was that, um. These shipping containers, a lot of them might have lead paint that they're painted with because they're made for overseas stuff. And what I thought was very interesting is. The person had done the research and said that the, the wooden floors in them, because they're used for shipping across the world, they are, they are fumigated on a regular basis, the wood floor. For insects and vermin and everything else, such that by the time they get to your backyard, they might be completely contaminated. And. Um, I don't know if you've ever heard this or whether this is. Um. What, is there anything we can do about this? Is this a, a public health unit issue? Is this? But how, if, if we have concerns about something going on with that, um. That structure, no ventilation with gas stored in it. A hundred different things. What's our avenue for, um? Examining that. Thank you.
Yeah, so that's the first I'd heard of it actually is when you mentioned it to me uh in your email. Um, but that's not something that we would look at under the Ontario Building Code. It doesn't get. That far i- into, you know. Uh, the reuse of a building like that. So my advice would probably be the Health Unit or the Ministry of the Environment. Um, but there would be no provisions for, for me to be able to ask for some type of a report on. Uh, other than the structural suitability, suitability of it. If somebody were to install one, even though it didn't need a permit, if I saw that it had massive holes in it. Um, that might flag it that it's not structurally suitable for the intended purpose. I could. Act on that, but in terms of the contamination or anything like that, not much that we could do from a, from a building code perspective.
And just a few more, your worship. Uh, it's my understanding that the, the lot coverage is like fifteen percent or something like that, that we are allowed to cover lots. So theoretically, somebody could have more than one of these shipping containers in their backyard. As long as they didn't exceed the maximum coverage. Is that correct?
Um, yes, that is correct. It's typically a percentage-based calculation.
And, and they don't need a foundation, I, um, right? They can just be put on the ground?
Generally, no, very, usually what we'll see is just compacted granular to be put down just to allow for some drainage. But generally, they, they wouldn't necessarily require a foundation, no.
Okay, my last one, I promise. Um, the person had questions about also R Vs, which is a whole separate thing. But, um, is it okay for an RV to be parked in your backyard on a fairly permanent basis? I assume that, uh, and, and that could be for somebody for uh an accessory dwelling, I, I suppose, but what are? What's the rules on that? And I know that Mister Pompilly said that we're going to talk a little bit about that next week, but I'd just like your thoughts on that. Thanks, and that's it. Thank you, your worship, for your patience.
So at a high level, you are permitted to store them. Um, you're not permitted to live in them, so you couldn't be staying overnight cooking your meals in it. Um, but if the kids were perhaps using it for the summertime as a, as a campout. But the zoning bylaw basically speaks to gross vehicle weights, which is one of the items why we wanted to bring it forward because this has become more of an issue. We are seeing more and more complaints coming in. Uh, about these being used for that. So you cannot live in them. Uh, you're not permitted to live in them, but uh, we want to tidy up some of the wording. Uh, because in some of these vehicles, they're very old. You can't tell, you can't determine what the gross vehicle weight is anymore. So we'd like to. Have it a little more clearly defined, just go on a straight maximum length. Uh, but again, we'll come back for, to get more information. Uh, from council as well to see kind of what the desire is.
Satisfied? Thank you, Counselor Wookiee. You've caused questions from a couple other counselors. Counselor Clark first, then Counselor Peters.
Thanks. Uh, are you worried about Cousin Eddie coming in next week? Yeah. Uh, the, the, it's, you raise some interesting questions because uh. The province has been encouraging and um, in allowing granny flats and, and, and uh more units on properties and, and. A lot of people are using those containers to build houses. And so it'd be interesting, um, you know. To see where this lands. Uh, I could, I could buy a lot and, and put three or four of these shipping containers on and build a house, so. Um. I, I know what you're saying. It's, it's, how do you dress up the outside, make them look presentable and, and make it look? But, um, but it's, it'll be interesting to see where this goes. Thanks.
Thank you. Mister Seco, anything on, on, on that piece?
Well, I think.
If Counselor Clark just puts four building permit or building containers together, are you visiting his house?
Um, yes, because you're going to be over a hundred and sixty-five square feet. But, um, yeah, I mean, and again, it depends. You could, you could limit it to just saying, you know, a, a shipping container can't be used as an accessory structure. Um, but again, you also have to be a little careful because then is an accessory dwelling unit, an accessory structure. So you, you'd have to be cautious with the wording to make sure you want to, again, acknowledging that there are a lot of companies that are repurposing these. Uh, to create buildings out of them, to create uh secondary dwellings. You can just. Finish them off-site, bring them on, ship them to the site, put them on a crane, hook them up to your plumbing and electrical services, and away you go. Um, so, yeah, you'd have to be really careful with the definition, um. To make sure that you. Kind of get the end result that you want.
Great. Counsel Peters.
Um, thanks, your worship. I just want to follow through with what Counselor Clark said, and I hope that that's part of the report. Um, because I've seen newspaper accounts of municipalities of people stacking these things and building houses. And, um, you know, I've driven by, there's a garage that has been built out of these things over on Stanley Street. And it's ugly. And I, even if the people are watching tonight, so be it. Um, I just. I wouldn't, and I'm, I'm assuming they got a permit. I don't know, but, um. I get to look at one of these things every day. Um, because my neighbor uses it to store things in. And I don't like it. But, so I look forward to hearing. The regulatory things that we can do and particularly what Counselor Clark is saying as well, too.
Great. Thanks. We look forward to uh next week. Boy, always anticipating future. Anything else under this uh committee? Seeing none?
We'll now move into Community Engagement and Services. There are no items on the agenda at this time unless there are any items from the members. Your worship, seeing none, we'll move into in- infrastructure and civic operations. First item relates to the Wilson Avenue and Fairview Avenue traffic volume and speed. Report. I have a motion that report E S sixty-five twenty-three relating to Wilson Avenue and Fairview Avenue traffic volume and speed be received for information. Moved by Council Wookiee, second by Council McCauley.
Questions or comments? Counsel Peters, then Counsel Wookiee.
Thanks very much, worship. Um. Uh, I, I noticed that the report is um. Not recommending automated speed enforcement. Um, but. As pointed out in the report, and I know a number of other municipalities are, are doing it. Um, I know it's something that has been on. Uh, Chief Roth's camp's um mind because I asked him some questions about it. Uh, a while back, uh, even the previous chief too, so, um. I, I wouldn't mind hearing a little more back about. What sort of capital investment would be required to, to go down this road? Is, is it a tool that could be of use to our local police service? Is it? Is it not a, a tool that could be of use? Um, um, you know, I. I liken it to the days, you know, I'm sure. Social media will light up that we're implementing photo radar, and it's not what we're talking about here. We're just talking about investigating. What sort of new tools? So I wouldn't mind hearing back, your worship, as to what sort of cost would be associated with it, uh, et cetera.
Mister Jilly Rick, good to have you at the podium. I know you and I have discussed this uh in, in a couple of different ways, so please share.
Yeah, absolutely. And so from the information that we've gathered about implementing A S, ASE Automated Speed Enforcement. In the other municipalities, one of the key things they say is make sure you're taking a data-driven approach before you jump down this rabbit hole. Um, so with that, um, we are looking at our community safety zones uh throughout the course of twenty-two-four to collect that data. Um, in order to help provide us the information we need to provide numbers that Counselor Peters is looking for. So I would say stay tuned. Um, we're, we're working on it. It's just one of those things that's chugging along in the background, but at this point in time, um. For Fairview Avenue, uh, we also have a corridor study uh in twenty-two-four, so we look to look. We hope to look towards some traffic calming measures through that uh study that'll help address the uh. The higher speeds that we're kind of seeing on Fairview of fifty-nine kilometers an hour. That'll help address the uh, the higher speeds that we're kind of seeing on Fairview of fifty-nine kilometers an hour over. Uh, of the speed limit there.
Counselor Wookiee?
Thanks, your worship. Uh, the, the Fairview I have one really scares me for one specific reason, and Mr. Delibek and I have talked about this. As you're heading north on Fairview and you get to Forest Ave, there's a, there's a crosswalk. And if you're in the right lane heading north and there's traffic in the left lane. You honest to God cannot see that person with their stop sign standing right in the middle of the intersection. Like, it's really dangerous. And if people are going sixty kilometers an hour, like, I, I just, it's one of those ones that just, I just, I cringe when I'm driving in that right lane. And there's people stop maybe for the crosswalk, but to turn left and you can't see anything. So I'm really happy to hear that we're doing a review of traffic on Fairview. Uh, so thank you very much. And I'm, and I'll be anticipating what comes out of it to make that a safer situation, especially for children. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Clark?
Thanks. The, the report talks about reasonable eighty-fifth percentile speeds. And I'm wondering what the threshold is that we would say it wasn't unsafe.
Uh, through the mayor to Counselor Clark. So our traffic calming policy helps provide the guidelines uh in that regard. So when we see speeds that are over ten kilometers an hour uh in a, on a, on a roadway. That's when we know we need to start implementing some soft traffic calming measures. That could be line painting, additional sign. There's different ways that we can do some of those, those pieces. Um, when we start to see that that's being ineffective, our traffic calming policy will then, we'll start ramping up those, those initiatives. So then we start looking at physical measures in terms of bump outs or, or stuff like that. So that's, that's where we get our guidance from.
Further questions on this one? Seeing done, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carry on. Next.
Next item relates to Kane Street and St. Catherine Street intersection improvements. A motion that report ES sixty-eight twenty-three relating to Kane Street and St. Catherine Street intersection improvements. Be received for information. Moved by Counselor Wookiee, seconded by Counselor Gibson.
Questions or comments? Counselor Gibson?
Um, I'd just like to thank Kevin to give me some time. He gave me about forty-five minutes of his time the other day to go over the situation here with Kane Street. And I, um, at the very beginning, I was very apprehensive about having a roundabout, but given the details that Kevin gave me. It's alleviated a lot of my concerns, so um, I'll be voting for this. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Herbert?
Thank you, worship. Well, initially, when this was brought to our attention, I thought, I'm a roundabout person. I, I, I like roundabouts, but when two hundred and some people say, we need to take a look at it, I think we need to take a look at it. This is the first roundabout that we'll have will be on a corner of the roundabout. The store is right on the corner of the roundabout. So I, what, I tried to do a little groundwork today on it. And I went to, to, to find out what I could find from the owner, but she was away. But you said in your report that you brought some changes to her. You put up a loading zone and you've spoken to her. And, and, but you haven't said, does she support the roundabout and, and the people? So that's, that's my question. I, I don't have a problem with a, with the roundabout, and I really don't have a problem with the four-way stop. Cause you're trying to slow people down or even keep traffic flowing with the roundabout. So anyway, I. I would really want to know, the owner, has she agreed that this is a workable situation? So we just keep peace with everybody and, and not just go ahead and put the roundabout in and don't worry about the people, two hundred and some people complaining, so. Anyway, so I just need to know, did you actually talk to her? Did she say, okay, this sounds good? And, and, and I, I'd be happy, a lot more happier with the roundabout than I would not supporting or supporting a four-way stop. So just my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Jilly Rick?
Through the mayor to Counselor Herbert. Um, the petition represents about two percent of the ADT that will go through this intersection. And uh, we typically don't design intersections for one person. Uh, so we have went through her comments from the Public Information Centre where she was the, uh, present. And we've outlined through our report how we're addressing some of her major concerns uh for that corner store. And those are loading, uh, construction um to the, as a result of construction for the business and parking. So we feel we've adequately addressed all of those items by making some slight modifications to the design since the pick. And so we're, we're hopeful that, that she'll be happy with those moving forward.
Go ahead, Counselor Herbert.
Thank you, just to follow up. Well, that's kind of disappointing to me to think you don't listen to people when they're. Just be, because they make a petition, it's only two percent. It's the people in that area. And, and they had some excellent concerns. Like I said, here's a Dixie store right on the corner of the roundabout. So a- a- anyway, I, like I say, I'm a roundabout person, but I really, and you really didn't answer me. Did you, when you contacted her, did you, did she say, this sounds good, what I'm doing? I'd be a lot more happy to support it if she said yes. So that was my question, and you didn't really. I answer it in my mind anyway, so. And I'm not feeling well today anyway, so I don't want to labor the point anymore, so thank.
Okay.
Sure, I can say that during the pick, uh, speaking with her and her husband, we did offer some potential solutions. Uh, regarding the unloading of deliveries, um, that we could probably do something with that. And the uh, uh, parking was something that they weren't aware of, um, that was nearby. Um, but again, uh, we, we do take comments from the public seriously. I was just pointing out the fact that two hundred and eighteen signatures represents two percent of the ADT that run through here. And that six of those attended the pick when we had that uh event.
Counselor Clark?
Thanks, worship. Um, I was very happy with the, the changes. I attended the public meeting and a, a number of the concerns that I heard was the um, the parking and the loading zone. And, and from the very, and those seem to be addressed with the fifteen-minute loading zone that's uh been, being erected. As well as the additional parking on the west side of the uh, of the project. And uh, when we first started the conversation, I think it was uh. Counselor Peters who was concerned about the safety of the foot traffic trying to get across that street. And that's one of the big things that this addresses and, and you do have that safety island in the middle of Kane Street now for pedestrians. So uh, I'm pleased with the redesign. I think staff listened to the people's uh concerns. Uh, they listened that night and were answering the questions, and I think we've got a, a good middle ground to go forward.
Further questions or comments? Okay, okay. So, sorry, go ahead, Steve. Uh, Counselor Peters?
Thanks, your worship. Um, I, I have a, a few questions and um, I just wanna look at the overall project. And you and I, thank you again for the, showing me the plans again, but. When I read um, our risk of failure maps that are on the city website. For water and sewer, I don't see that Kane Street is on a risk of failure. Um, I remember the Kane Street project when it was done, maybe thirty years ago. I can remember, this is Joyce, the late, great Joyce Locke, seventy-two Kane Street. Who, um, you know, stepped forward to really scrutinize the project. So he, overall with the infrastructure, we've got thirty-year-old infrastructure. And we gotta dig it all up. So you explained some of this to me, but I think the public needs to hear some of the, the uh. The challenges, because that's one that I question. I've got some other questions too, but why are we working on a project that we should have had seventy-five years of life on it?
Mr. Jilly Rick?
Yeah, certainly. So through mayor to Counselor Peters, um, the, not all of the underground infrastructure is being replaced as part of this project. So the storm sewer is remaining in place, the sanitary, which was uh lined is remaining in place. The water main infrastructure is being replaced because it was slip-lined back, uh, I think about thirty years ago. And the difference between cured-in-place lining and slip lining is slip lining is exactly that. You slip a pipe inside of the other pipe. So if we were to experience a break, we will not know where that will occur. Because that water can travel very far down the original pipe. And so it's a preventative nightmare exercise that we're going through at this point in time to make sure that. Um, we can actually locate a main break if it were to occur along that section. So that's the fundamental piece of the water main infrastructure work that's occurring.
Counselor Peters?
Why, why do we need to move forward on Curtis and Scott Street? Leaving the one ways and going to two-way traffic? Um, I have found as someone who uses those roads daily. That I really like the one way going westbound and the one way coming eastbound. Um, and what, and the condition of the, particularly Scott Street from about the intersection of Hiawatha West to St. George. Scott, it's Scott Street's in really sad condition and it's not on the, the, the master plan list till at least twenty twenty-nine. Um. And, and I realize speed could be a fact, speed is an issue, but why couldn't we look at similar as we have a uh. A three-way stop, four-way stop at Curtis and Hiawatha. Why couldn't we look at a three-way stop at Hiawatha and Scott? To use that as a traffic calming device and give consideration to reverting to two-way traffic. When we rebuild those roads, um, I know in your report, you say that we've got enough width. But i- it's, you, it's just gonna be this in and out, in and out, in and out. And um, why do we need to proceed with the removal of the one-way eastbound and westbound?
Mr. Jilly Rick?
Uh, through the mayor to Counselor Peters, um, one thing I just wanted to highlight is using stop control as a speed measure. Or speed reducing device is an inappropriate use for a stop sign. Um, there's better ways to, to address speed than using stop control. Um, and that's supported through the Ontario Traffic Manual Guidelines as well. Um, the reason for the conversion of Scott and Curtis from one way to two-way is it was identified in twenty nineteen. As a, a path forward to help address the speed through the corridor. So as you mentioned, uh, so they were originally two-way. Um, when the expressway went in, they were converted to one way in each direction. And so uh, we're not proposing to remove any of the on-street parking because we are aware that some people in this area do not have driveway space for parking. So they'll still be able to use that. Um, but the conversion also comes out of the fact that we had an independent, independent review. Through the Transportation Master Plan, also take a look at this and came to the same conclusion. That in order to help address the speed through this corridor, that would help um by narrowing it down a little bit. To what we're seeing in larger urban cities, uh, moving away from one-way streets to um narrower streets. To help control the, the speed through there. And uh, the other reason is it's kind of necessary in order for this project to move forward so that people can access their homes. Um, when this intersection's closed down and it's a one-way street, they would be driving the wrong way down a one-way street. So we need to make sure that we do that conversion in order to help facilitate this project.
Thank you. Uh, my next question is, um, a lot of the concern that's been expressed has been about. Um, deliveries and access for vehicles. And I took an opportunity to um, I certainly have watched the delivery activity at this intersection. Um, quite closely in the last little bit, living in proximity to it to, to just see. Um, but I, I noted as well too, that as I drove around the city, that there are. Other variety stores, other small businesses that um also are facing some problems. Like, you know, I looked at one at Wellington and Elgin Street.
Yeah.
Um, um, that is, that's a huge delivery challenge that obviously exists there. And Park Ave in Wellington, another one, um, where there's really, it, it's, they're, they're much like this building. Um, but when you look at a roundabout versus a four-way and you look at the map that you have provided. Um, the way I look at that map, if I'm reading, I'm not an engineer. And sometimes we sit around here, we think we are engineers or planners and uh, and we're not. But, but I look at, I, I look at that map and it, it actually looks like it is going to provide better access. For uh, deliveries, uh, customers that are carried, that are traveling with boats or trailers. If I'm reading that correctly, it looks like there's gonna be better access to the corner with a roundabout. Then there would be with a four-way stop. Is, am I reading that right or am I reading that wrong?
Uh, through the mayor to Counselor Peters, um, the roundabout does provide option or provides the ability for trailers. To negotiate with a truck apron through the center. So it, it does make it a little bit easier for them to navigate through there. The radii is also a little bit larger than an all-way stop, as you can see in the geometric comparison. So it does in, improve the maneuverability for those uh tow behinds.
Okay. And, and my last question um is, is the um. Community artwork a um, a must for this project? Um, if we can save some money and I, I also, I, I am not opposed to community art. We've put lots of new roundabouts in and we have not put artwork at every new roundabout that has gone in. Um, and I don't know whether this art has been commissioned. But I'm, one of the things that concerns me with the, with uh, with the artwork is that it, it does have the. Potential to impair some sightlines as you were approaching it. I'd say um, coming from um, from my house in St. Catherine Street. And if I was going to be going eastbound on Kane Street, if there's a, a large monument right in front of me. I, I cannot look across the street to see if there's somebody coming around uh southbound. And so is, is the artwork a must?
Mr. Jilly Rick?
Uh, through the mayor to Counselor Peters, that artwork was commissioned in twenty twenty-two. Um, and we expect its delivery later this month. Um, so it'll be ready to be installed. The other important piece is that when approaching a, a roundabout, uh, there's left less conflict points than there are at a typical intersection. Or traffic signalized intersection where you don't necessarily need to look to see what's coming from the north of you. Um, you simply need to look to your left. And so if you see a car coming around there, then you have to wait, but if you don't, you're good to go. So um, obviously, all public art that goes into the roundabout are designed to try to make sure that we're not impacting any type of sightlines. Um, but we wanna do a bit more than just wildflowers, I, I would imagine.
Mr. Her- C- Counselor Herbert?
Thank you, worship. Uh, just a follow-up question. Uh, you have a lot lumped into this presentation in a roundabouts, Curtis and Scott both way. Um, during the construction, John Street was turned into a two-way. I- is there a comment on that? Is that unsuccessful? Uh, John Street, cause it always was one-way. So I just wondered, I mean, we're looking at doing the same thing to Scott and Curtis. Has there been any concerns with John Street being a two-way?
Uh, through the mayor to Counselor Herbert, I'm not familiar with that file, so I'll have to get back to you afterwards.
Okay. Kevin, I have something you can help me with. And, and it's perhaps not the engineers at council, but the engineers on, on social media. Um, can, can you help, help me explain, as I've, I've done a number of times. About what the warrants are for a four-way stop? You mentioned already tonight that four-way stops, no stop sign can be a traffic calming measure. It just is a stop sign. But there are warrants as to what streets could possibly stop in all four directions or should stop in all four directions. I've been trying to, help me if I'm saying it wrong, that if there's a certain amount of traffic on the main route that cars are traveling. And lesser amount on the stop, on a, what is currently a stop sign side. It doesn't warrant a four-way stop because it actually makes all the traffic stop and start. Um, and doesn't add to the smooth flow of traffic. Um, and we, we, we have many people in our lives that tell us that four-way stops are the answer to everything, including a happy marriage, apparently. But we, um, can you help me with, with the description of a true warrant for putting up a four-way stop at an intersection?
Uh, certainly, uh, through the chair, um, there are four tests that are administered. In order to determine whether an all-way stop is required or at a location. Uh, those involve collision, uh, to your point about um, minor and major traffic at the intersection. And I can't quite remember the other two tests, but they're all, basically you put the numbers into a spreadsheet after you do a traffic movement count. And it'll help spit it out for you. Uh, this is the same thing that uh many municipalities use from the Transportation Association of. And it'll help spit it out for you. Uh, this is the same thing that, uh, many municipalities use from the Transportation Association of Canada.
Um, I see from your diagram that this, this intersection in no way fits the warrant for a four-way stop. Would that, am I, I've, I've been saying that all along and, and wonder if I've been saying the wrong thing.
No, you haven't been saying the wrong thing, uh, through, through to the mayor and, um. Previous reports have also concluded the same thing. So we haven't seen a change. Uh, significant change in the traffic moving, movement counts at this particular intersection that would. All of a sudden flip the tables to that it would be warranted.
Thank you very much. Further questions?
Recorded vote please.
Okay, a recorded vote's been called for, we'll go ahead with that.
Uh, on the vote, uh, councillor Baldwin Sands?
Yes.
Councillor Clark?
Yes.
Councillor Gibson?
Yes.
Councillor Herbert?
I will say yes.
Councillor Kohler?
Yes.
Councillor McCully?
Yes.
Councillor Peters?
Yes.
Councillor Wookiee?
Yes.
Your worship?
Yes.
Uh, your worship, the motion is passed.
Thank you. Next item. Councillor Kohler, did you have your hand up?
I'm, I might be beating the clerk here, but I just, we're going to the next, uh, committee now, right?
Uh, at this time, we're going into mo- uh, new business under the same committee. So the next item relates to industrial development update two. I have a motion that report ID ten. Twenty-three relating to industrial development update number two be received for information. Moved by councillor Wookiee, seconded by councillor Gibson.
Questions or comments on the report? Councillor Peters?
One of my, one of my fa- your favorite topics and mine, railways and CN. Everything seems to be moving along. Very well out there. Um, yet, I'm assuming that the railway yard might be important to building the plant. I don't know, but, uh, you know, we just heard. We're delayed on a Barwick Street Bridge because CN hasn't met with us. And now here we are seeing another delay. As a result, coming from CN. So I'm curious, do we, Nathan, do we need to, um. Be lighting a bit of a. A, a fire under CN?
Through your worship, councillor Peters, um, no, I wouldn't necessarily the, uh, the issues with CN on, on that item. It's more having to do with, uh, the timelines, uh, with, uh, between, uh, us and, uh, and Paraco and the province. Uh, to deliver that item. And so, uh, right now we have to build a rail bridge. Uh, to get to the site there. And so we're kind of constrained by timelines of building a bridge within the, uh. Period of time that we have to deliver by. So it's more of that issues, not necessarily with CN. CN has been actually pretty good to work with so far to date, knock on wood. But, uh, yeah, so, uh, things have been going very well on that front.
Councillor Clark?
Uh, thanks. I just wonder if you could do a, a further comment on the other two caution items.
Uh, so the one with, uh, planning and zoning, uh, we're working with our, uh. Counterparts at the Ministry of Economic Development and also Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. I always have to say that the right way, cause I always say housing and affairs. But anyway, uh, we're working with them to, uh, help us, uh. With some of the matters on, uh, planning and zoning, uh, for the site. Uh, we just submitted our plan of subdivision last week and, uh. Uh, the director of Planning and Building Services just sent me a email today saying our application is complete. So that's good. So we should hopefully be, uh, releasing all that information publicly in the next little while. Other one is, uh, pollution control plant, uh, number two, moving forward, we are awarded the, uh, consulting assignment for the. Uh, schedule C class EA and preliminary design to, uh, AECOM, working through that process right now. Um, there's just a lot of items to work through on that, on that file with. Not only the detailed design, but also construction of the plan and then diversion works to the new plant. Um, and so. With all those timelines and getting the plan operational by twenty twenty-eight, there's, uh. A lot of work needs to be done. Um, we feel very, uh, confident to deliver by that date though, but we're just making sure that's on council's radar. That is, is something that, uh. If there's some certain approvals that are being held up by, and like say Ministry of Environment or something like that, that it could possibly throw a wrench in that. So we're just. Cautiously moving forward, but we're also cautiously optimistic on that file as well.
Councillor Clark?
It's my understanding that we have about five years excess capacity. Built in, right? So even if we were to be delayed on, on this in some aspect, we'd still be in good shape to. Have the plant, uh, running on time.
Through your worship, councillor Clark, um, so the existing plant is doing very well with regards to capacity. Um, the need for the new sewer stream plant would be to get all the folks from the Greater Industrial Park up to it to, to serve as a soul. There's. Like, say a bit of a, a constraint on the overall sewer system getting, uh, from the point, uh, at the. At the industrial park down to the plant there, it can only handle so much sewage. So this is why we need to get the second plant up and running. So we can divert most of the sewage from the Greater Industrial Park, um, to, uh, to the new plant. As for, uh, getting, uh, things up and running for, uh, the Volkswagen battery plant, there's enough capacity in the interim to kind of get those folks moving forward.
Further questions or comments on the report? Councillor Peters, sorry.
Sorry, worship, it wasn't in the report, but I'm just, um, and one of my site tours. Or later in the fall, um, I had the opportunity to see the archaeological excavations that were going on. And, um, it was, and it just kept growing and growing and growing that the one site that they were working on particularly, but, um. Um, and I, I know, um, the indigenous community was providing oversight to, uh. To all the work that was taking place and I was glad to see that partnership that had been developed, but, uh. Um, it's not in your report, but was there anything significant archaeologically found, um, on the site? Not saying none of, it's, it's all significant that these are memories of people that have walked these lands for ten thousand years, but. Um, we didn't find any villages or, uh, cemeteries or anything like that.
Through your worship, councillor Peters, uh, nothing significant in that regard. We are finding some certain items like pottery and some maybe tools of that type nature. Uh, but nothing that's, uh, of any significant concern like that.
Councillor Baldwin Sands?
Thank you. I thank councillor Peters for asking the questions on the archaeological report. That has been, uh. Something that I've been very passionate about, but also the last item under here with the environmental remediation. I was hoping that you could expand a little bit about tree planting, about, uh, the bat and the woodpecker boxes, for example. Because when we were out there, there was all of the discussion and talk about how they were gonna move forward. And I think it deserves a little bit more, um, emphasis than what is in here. So could you use this as an opportunity to expand on the environmental?
Through your worship, councillor Baldwin Sands, um. We are doing a lot of work in preparation for the compensation for, uh, with the various approvals that we've received from the province for, for the woodlot removals. We are doing a lot of, uh, work for those, uh, for the various different aspects of that with the bat boxes, um, with the woodpecker, uh. Nesting boxes as well as, uh, the tree planting, everything like that. Uh, I do have a report, hopefully it'll be coming forward in, uh, the last meeting in January, that's gonna kind of. Outline our overall plan that we have for proceeding with this and kind of highlighting some of the different things. We've been in active discussions. Um, with the two conservation authorities in the area. As to how we can partner with them and they are very eager and excited to work with us. And so we're just gonna continue working with that and also. Working with our consultant to fine-tune what our compensation will need to look like for, um. For the, uh, the new, uh, new force or enhanced force. We have also have that option as well to look into that, so.
Okay, go ahead.
And including the recovery and the seedlings as well.
Correct.
Thank you.
Councillor Clark?
My understanding was a part of like you, uh, phase one, two, there's phase one, two and three, and one of those phases was. Uh, the actual parking lot and, and that it needed to be done so that, uh, as equipment and things arrived, it would be a staging area. I'm just wondering, is that when that would, it, did that include paving and, and like a finalized parking lot? And when would that be completed by?
Through your worship, councillor Clark, so, um, the granular placement, the gravel placement for the, uh. The truck parking lot and also the employee parking lot on the south side has been completed, so that's done. That area will be used in the interim by Powerco for, uh, a temporary construction staging area for their contractor and also possible site offices for them. So that's up and that is done, ready to go. Eventually we'll need to, uh, pave that parking lot and I believe that needs to be done, uh, sometime in twenty-five. Twenty-five.
Further questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor of the report? Any opposed? Carried. Thanks, Nathan.
Your worship, no further items for this committee or unless there are any items from the members?
Councillor Kohler?
Thanks, your worship. It's good to see that we're getting some unfinished business knocked off the list. I was just wondering if, uh, we could maybe get. Periodically an update of where we stand with the other, uh. Unfinished business that's still, still waiting. I've had a few people asking about a couple of items on there and it'd be nice to report back.
Do, do you particular or just?
Well, one in particular, the poll, um, the residents on poll looking for that report coming back with what's happening in their backyard.
Yeah, I guess, if, if I can just suggest from here, that probably once a month, we should list our unfinished business items. So we can talk about the city manager?
Uh, thank you, worship. Through you, the members of council, we actually have a running list that's, uh, populated by the. Uh, clerk's office and as a city's leadership team, we meet every other week. Uh, and then once a month we look at it as well. So we'll, uh, review those and bring them back as we can, um, and we take them off a list when they're done.
Under, under unfinished business, if it's, if it's okay, we, 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 the, the downtown development board was also talking about the rail line. And the CN property at the end of. Flora Station. And I think there's, they've sent a letter to us asking for us, our input on where are we on that piece too. So expect that to come. Anything else under, where am I here? Under unfinished business? Anything under new business? I've. Or is, am I, am I at the right new business?
You're under new business under, uh, infrastructure and development, your worship.
Okay, so we'll leave that alone and we'll get to new business, new business on the next page.
Uh, okay, so the next, uh, committee is actually Corporate Governance and Administration. Uh, first item there under new business is the twenty twenty-four emergency alternatives for council. I have a motion that report CC oh eight twenty-three relating to the twenty twenty-four emergency alternatives be received for information. And further the council establish, uh, roster of council members to serve as an alternate to the mayor for the year twenty twenty-four. In the event of a municipal emergency, should the mayor not be available. And it begins, uh, from January to December, uh, begins with councillor McCully. Uh, and continues in alphabetical order, your worship.
Great, and.
I could have a mover and a seconder for the motion, moved by councillor Gibson, seconded by councillor Baldwin Sands.
Questions or comments? We did have a, a bit of a conversation about this, um, just among a couple of us before council and. If your name falls in a time when you're going to not be here, please. Reach out to one of your colleagues and, and look for an alternative if you can. I'll always use the list as it's written, um. From a emergency replacement of me, I, as, uh, most of you know, we're in, uh, Germany for the next three days. And councillor Kohler, who's, who is our committee chair this, this week, this month, will be covering while I'm away. I don't tend to cover myself much if I'm in town anyway, but, but I thank councillor Kohler for doing that for us in December. Further questions or comments? Seeing then, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next item relates to twenty twenty-four interim tax levy. I have a motion that report TR twenty-two twenty-three relating to the twenty twenty-four interim tax levy be received for information. And further, council approved the preparation of a bylaw to establish the twenty twenty-four interim tax levy. Moved by councillor Herbert, seconded by councillor Wookiee.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next item relates to the twenty twenty-four borrowing limits. Have a motion that report TR twenty-three twenty-three relating to twenty twenty-four borrowing limits. Be received for information and further the council approved the preparation of bylaw to establish the twenty twenty-four borrowing limits. Moved by councillor Wookiee, seconded by councillor Gibson.
Questions or comments on borrowing limits? Seeing that, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next item relates to the purchase-to-service agreement with the St. Thomas Economic Development Corporation. I have a motion that report ADM thirty-five twenty-three relating to the purchase-to-service agreement between the City of St. Thomas. And the St. Thomas Economic Development Corporation be received for information. And further that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the agreement. Moved by councillor Clark, seconded by councillor Kohler.
Questions or comments on the service agreement? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried. Thank you for joining us tonight, Mister Frenoch.
Your worship, unless there are any further items under this committee?
Councillor Clark?
Thank you, worship. With the passing of the budget, uh, last week, I did have, um, someone reach out and. Wonder how we were going to communicate to hospice and the hospital of our intentions. Would that be a letter from? Yourself or the city manager to clarify how we're moving forward?
I know that the clerk has, uh, done a couple of drafts and we've, so it, it either has gone or it is about to. So yes. Am I right?
Yes, you are, your worship, through you. Uh, we also did reach out to them directly, um, by email and had discussions with them and the clerk did write a letter for the mayor's signature. So. They've been advised.
Anything else under corporate government, governance and administration? Seeing then?
Council will now reconvene into regular session. I have a motion that the recommendations, directions and actions of council. In committee, the whole is recorded in the minutes of this date be confirmed, ratified and adopted. Moved by councillor Gibson, seconded by councillor Clark.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried. Forgot where I was there for a moment.
Uh, no reports of committees this evening. We now move into petitions and communications. Uh, first item is a letter received from victim services Elgin, uh, requesting a proclamation for human, uh, trafficking awareness day. I have a motion that council, the City of St. Thomas proclaim February the twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. As human trafficking awareness day in the City of St. Thomas. And further that human trafficking awareness flag be flown at city hall on February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Moved by councillor Peters, seconded by councillor Baldwin Sands.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next item is a request for a five-hour parking on Hink Street between Elizabeth and Wellington. I have motioned that the letter received from Artes Hul on, uh, fifty-six Hink Street. Requesting five-hour parking on Hinks between Elizabeth and Wellington be referred to the Environmental Services Department for a report. Moved by councillor Herbert, seconded by councillor McCully.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, oh, sorry, councillor Clark, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wonder, um, what the history of that street was, why, uh, it's two hours and do we have other areas? Well, I know we have other areas where you can just park all day, right? You can. So I'm just wondering why, why there is the two-hour restriction there.
Mr. Gillibec, I'm gonna put you on the, on the spot and say, how did that one get two hours when the rest have more of an all-day parking?
And through the mayor, I'll simply say, uh, let's refer it to staff and we'll get back to you on the history of that so we can review that together.
Super. Thank you. Further questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Uh, next item is a copy of a resolution received from. Uh, the town of Bracebridge requesting an amendment to the legislation act. Uh, to include digital publications as an acceptable means of publication and notice requirements for provincial acts and. Uh, let, regis- excuse me, and regulations. Uh, next item, a letter has been received from the Lake Erie Source Protection Region. Requesting support for the appointment of Alex Pigott, manager of environmental services. In the municipality of Central Elgin as the group seven representative. Uh, at this time, your worship, I'm suggesting that. This matter either be referred to staff or council may be interested in supporting the nomination. Of Mr. Pigott, uh, to represent group seven on the Lake Erie Region Source Protection Committee.
I'm hearing send it to staff, they'll know better than.
Okay, uh, your worship, I have a motion by councillor Kohler, seconded. Okay. Uh, your worship, I have a motion by councillor Kohler, seconded by councillor Herbert, uh, that the letter be referred to staff.
Great. Further discussion? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next item, a letter received from Kettle Creek Conservation Authority regarding the authority's 2024 draft budget and general levy apportionment. On your worship, that concludes the items on the, uh, under petitions and communications at this time. Unless the members have any further matters, we'll move into unfinished business of council.
I think we already moved into that.
That was for a particular committee, your worship.
Kind of like it.
Um, seeing no items here, um, we're moving into new business of council.
Any items for new business of council? I, I, I have one to share. I was at, um, Grace Cafe Saturday morning for their ninth anniversary celebration. Grace Cafe and, and Ginny Trepanier has been a huge part of our community for nine years in, in, in two locations in the running of Grace Cafe. What broke my heart was Ginny decided she's, uh, make, to make the announcement on Saturday that she's also going to step down. Um, that's not to say she's going away, but she's stepping down and, and Laurie will be taking over as the manager of Grace Cafe. Dawn, um, her husband, um, who operates the annex next door will also be retiring or joining Ginny in, in, in retirement. And, uh, there's a new CEO, Mike, who's taking over at the annex. But, uh, from a, uh, I wa- I was glad I was there to be able to share some thoughts with Ginny and, and Dawn on Saturday morning. And if you get a chance, say thank you. I mean, this has been a huge part of our community and it will stay that way is what's been shared with us, that Grace Cafe will not change in any way. And the annex will carry on growing in its, its way too. And so, um, uh, Ginny, sad to see you, uh, not be there every day, but, uh, take some well-read, well-needed rest and Dawn, take care of her. Thanks.
Your worship, that there's no further items? We'll now move into bylaws. I have a motion that leave be granted to bring in the bylaws, moved by councillor Baldwin Sands, seconded by councillor Peters.
Questions or comments? Seeing, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carrie. Yeah. We just wanted to make sure we were, you know, getting the questions, comments properly. That's, yeah.
I have a motion by councillor Baldwin Sands, seconded by councillor Peters, that the bylaws be now read a first time, referred to council and committee of the whole and read a second time.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
First bylaw, please.
First bylaw is a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting held on the eleventh day of December, twenty twenty-three.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Let's carry. Next bylaw, please.
Second bylaw is a bylaw to adopt an interim tax levy.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Let's carry. Next bylaw.
Third bylaw is a bylaw to authorize borrowing from time to time to meet current expenditures during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Let's carry. Next bylaw, please.
Fourth bylaw is a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of corporation to a certain agreement between the city and Algen Residential Hospice. This relates to, uh, site plan file for the property at eight Southway, Dwell Road.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Let's carry. Next bylaw, please.
Uh, fifth and final bylaw is a bylaw to appoint an acting mayor, uh, for the period from December twelfth to sixteenth. And that's councillor Jeff Cold.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Your worship, I rise and report the successful passing of the five bylaws.
Thank you.
I have motion by councillor Baldwin Sands, seconded by councillor Peters, that the report of council and committee of the whole on the five bylaws be received and adopted. The same be read a third time and grossed, signed by the mayor and clerk, sealed and numbered.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next order of business is public notice. Uh, the corporation is city of St. Thomas hereby provides notice of its intention to adopt the 2024 operating budget and the 2024 capital budget at its meeting to be held on Monday, January the eighth, twenty twenty-four at five PM. No notices of motion, uh, your worship, there is a need to move into closed session. I have motion that this meeting be closed to deal with a proposed or pending disposition of land. Moved by councillor McCauley, seconded by councillor Baldwin Sands.
Thank you. Before we vote, um, we, the same as normal, we'll be moving into our closed session, which ends our open session. We'll come back into open session only to adjourn for the evening and, uh, move on. So I thank you all for, all that are watching from home or all that were here, uh, for being here. And, uh, questions or comments on moving to closed session? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.